Section 2.32.020, Department Personnel, and Chapter 2.84, Miscellaneous Boards and Commissions, Section 2.84.050, International Fire Code Board of Appeals of Title II Administration and Personnel of the Cheyenne City Code pertaining to the Fire and Rescue Department.
Thank you, sir. Discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public. Okay, hearing done. Mr. Weber.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Moved by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. Case. Discussion by council? Discussion by council. Okay, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance, second reading, creating Section 1.08.030, Official Song Recognition and Use of Chapter 1.08, Official Seal and Emblem of Title I General Provisions of the Code of the City of Cheyenne, Wyoming, pertaining to designation of Cheyenne Anthem, copyright 2018, as the official song of the city of Cheyenne.
Thank you. Is there discussion by the public on this matter? Discussion by the public.
Mayor, members of the council, Scott Meyer, on behalf of AEI Music Productions and the rest of the songwriters, but we encourage you to approve this ordinance. There was some discussion, at least the copy that I have, and it's the older copy, but there was some discussion, and I believe that the committee had approved it, some changes that Councilman Shaner had proposed in combining B and C together. So I don't know what version you folks have, but I was looking at that, the older one. And it does refer to, you know, other sections down below in D, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that kind of a change in there. The only proposal that I would ask that the council consider in there, just an amendment, is that it says, at least in B, including but not limited to promotion, advertising, marketing, and tourism, and I would think that it would be very nice if you also added in there "education", because I think that the third and fourth graders study the history of the city of Cheyenne and also discuss, you know, how this is important. And this song does, in fact, talk about the history of Cheyenne. And so my thought would be to ask the council to make a further amendment and include the word "education" in that as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
I guess the one thing you guys can clarify that didn't get released too much in the public was the fact that you guys did the fundraising, that as far as the 150th Anniversary Committee in the city and things, no funds were really divvied out by those agencies, that you guys took it upon yourself to actually do your own fundraising effort, to go down to Nashville to actually do your own recording on your own dime. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, through you, Councilman Johnson, yes, I think, to some extent, but there was 150th Committee, and we reached out to them as well. And the answer that we pretty much received was, we've already designated people to contribute to the 150th Committee and to do stuff, so if you want to raise funds, you have to do that on your own. The artists went out and did, in fact, contract, reach out to people and did receive funds, and it was deposited with Darren Rudolph to hold that money. That money was used for the recording purposes in Nashville and to have the, you know, the tracks laid down. I will tell you that the funds that were received did not cover enough of that. The artists had to lay out additional funds on their own for things like making sure that the song was laid out for the children's choir, for other things like that, to make sure that that was done. So the artists themselves laid out considerable funds on this to make that happen.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Meyer?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments by the public? Comments by the public? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Weber.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Weber, seconded by Mr. White. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Weber.
I move to amend by combining Section B and C into a new Section B to read as follows. The city shall have, the city shall have non-exclusive, gratis rights to use the entire song or any portion thereof, the name of the song for any and all official city commercial and/or non-commercial uses, including merchandise, and by relabeling Section D to Section C.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and discussion by the public on the amendment? I think it was spoken to earlier. Discussion by council on the amendment.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Weber.
And as far as adding education in there, well, this, again, is on second reading, so we can put that in in the committee meeting if we so desire.
Thank you.
Public Services.
Mr. Shaner.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor, for your comments, Mr. Meyer. When we made this amendment in committee, we took out the express manners, so the uses including but not limited to promotion, advertising, marketing, and tourism. And that's out of the current amendment now. That was read out of committee. So, and reading that, though, in conjunction with the new subsection C, which talks about us negotiating commercial use, other than what's set forth in B, I think we need to add those explicit items back in. So I would encourage support of this amendment, and when this amendment out of committee passes, that would clean it up further by adding in those explicit uses back in to B and include the education piece as well.
Okay, questions of, further questions on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
Okay, just some clarifications. The thing is, is a lot of people text me on this in regards to the fact that Kansas, the band Kansas, actually already has a song called Cheyenne Anthem when they did their search to actually look at this. So the song title itself, even though it's copyrighted under this specific artist, and obviously has completely different lyrics, that was what they, when they did their Google search, the top hit was that band. When it comes to actually the promotions of this, individuals wrote me on regards to the graphics that are in the video for this. I was written today that most of the graphics came from the faces of Cheyenne through the Wyoming Tribune Eagle. My question was, was Kurt Russell one of those faces that was featured in the faces of Cheyenne? Because one of the key parts that people stopped at had a picture of Kurt Russell, and so when we were talking about the whole copyright and promotion of this, were all the images, in fact, with signed permission for their images to be shown. Because the video is five and a half minutes long, with as far as the faces of Cheyenne, individuals, as well as companies, when they were watching the video, thought that there were images that may not have come from the faces of Cheyenne, or whether it came from the CFD Committee in regards to, you know, the Indians and the rodeo and everything. But I was just wondering that when we bind ourselves to this, if it comes back, then in fact, you know, we're using this video for promotions, and then Kurt Russell or other people locally within the community find out that their images were actually used without their consent, exactly where does that put us in regards to this amendment?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I would just make a point of order that this ordinance doesn't have anything to do with the music video. And so I would argue that that concern is not germane to this amendment.
Okay, I guess, to follow up, the song that we're approving is attached to a video that was produced to enhance the use of the song.
Mr. Shaner, is there, do you want?
I would, I, point of order, you can rule it germane or not, I guess I would ask.
I don't believe it's germane. We are actually talking about the song and not any attached video or recording of any past performance. It's just the song itself. Okay, further questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
And I'm not a copyright attorney, but Cheyenne Anthem, there may be another song out there called that, but we're being explicit that it's the words and music written by Amy and Annie Smith, Ty Warner, and Todd DeReemer, that we're designating that specific version of Cheyenne Anthem. Whether there's a contested issue between the band Kansas and these folks around the use of that name, I don't think really involves us. We're being specific about what song we're adopting in ordinance.
Okay, I guess as a follow-up.
Mr. Johnson.
When I spoke to, after the last meeting when this was introduced, a lot, a lot of the discussion came up that if there was Cheyenne, Oklahoma, and then they wanted to use the Cheyenne Anthem, that I told them that, you know, that was outside of the city of Cheyenne's jurisdiction to enforce any of our laws in a city of the same name in whatever state it was. And so it still kind of goes back as far as the copyright, if you can't enforce your own laws in another municipality. I said, I just don't understand the concept of bringing something forward of this nature, you know, and when a lot of the talk was around copyrights and how the city of Cheyenne was going to adopt this, and, you know, for whether it's advertising purposes, tourism purposes, all these different purposes, this is how it was going to be marketed. So I just, when the discussion came up that they didn't want this song being used in other communities, I just didn't know how this was going to be enforced, if it was actually a copyright, because as far as I knew, the copyright resided with the artists. Nothing actually tied the city of Cheyenne, except for its actual, it was proclaimed the city anthem. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
I don't think that the city of Cheyenne or any of its law enforcement officers have any legal authority to regulate music in Cheyenne, Oklahoma, or Cheyenne Wells, Colorado, or various other places. And I, I think that this ordinance is pretty clear to the city of Cheyenne, and certainly the words and the music and so forth. And the supporting document referenced Cheyenne, Wyoming.
Yeah.
Clear where we're going here.
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't have even brought it up if it wasn't the discussion that I had with the artists after when it was introduced, that these were some of the concerns that they had as far as, you know, getting this pushed through the city, or basically the city government. It was, you know, as far as I was concerned, it was a mute point until they brought it up.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no. We are back on the main motion. Further discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
I'll move to amend the new Section B. And I believe it reads right now, "for any and all official city commercial and/or non-commercial uses, including merchandise." Madam Clerk, is that how it ends right now? Subsection B. Okay, so I will amend that last part there, and it will now read, "official city commercial and/or non-commercial uses, including but not limited to merchandise, promotion, advertising, marketing, tourism, and education." And then the second part of the amendment will, in paragraphs, the new paragraph C, which was paragraph D, we reference in the last part there, "items set forth in Sections B and C", and the "and C" would just need to be stricken, so it would just be section, and strike the S, so it would just be Section B of this section. That's my amendment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, and discussion by the public on the amendment. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
So, the way I read this, this is how, this is what we're agreeing to as a city. We have non-exclusive right to use the entire song, any portion of the song, or the name of the song, for any and all official city commercial and/or non-commercial use, so it's a lot. And then we explicitly say those things that we just read in the amendment. And then for anything that might be disputed as not being a part of those words, so if it's disputed as to whether it's actual promotion, advertising, marketing, or education between us and the people that own the rights to the song, then we would have to negotiate with them under subsection C. So if it's disputed whether our use does not fall within those explicit uses that we've stated in the ordinance, then we would have to negotiate that use with the folks that we mentioned here.
Okay, clearly you did not succumb to the tryptophan coma over the Thanksgiving weekend. You were busy. Any further discussion on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr.?
He brings up a valid point. So because this is an ordinance, it's actually going to be on the books for the next 100 years. So is it with negotiations, like he said, for persons currently alive? So the city of Cheyenne is always going to be that entity. So does it go on to their estate? Is that who the negotiations would go through? Is, just like how he just stated, as far as, you know, you're, because the ordinance is going to stay on there for, you know, 100 years. So who does the negotiation happen with if it's, if these people are no longer present or alive?
Mr. Shaner.
Madam Mayor, I don't think any of us should speculate on that, other than if down the road that happens, there may be a dispute, but I don't think we could word it any way to avoid a potential dispute decades down the road. That could, that could definitely happen.
Okay, any other further comments from council or questions? All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no. We're back on the main motion. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Johnson as a no.
Next item is number 17. Resolution declaring a surplus of city-owned property legally described as Lot 1 Block 1, Clerc Creek subdivision first filing, Lot 2 Block 1 Clerc Creek subdivision first filing, and Lot 1 Block 1 Clerc Creek subdivision second filing, together with improvements thereon, Cheyenne Laramie County, Wyoming, and authorizing the city's purchasing manager to proceed with the sale of said parcel pursuant to Wyoming Statute, Section 15-1-112.
Thank you, sir. Discussion by the public. Staff report.
Vicky Nemeczek, Public Works Director. This resolution declares city-owned property located in Swan Ranch as surplus property. This resolution is in response to interest by Dino Nobel to purchase this property for green space. We have completed the process outlined in the purchasing manual to surplus this property. It has been determined any revenue from the sale of this property would be subject to the original development agreement and purchase and sale agreement, which basically means it would go towards parks. We also need to record sewer easements for BOPU prior to any sale. We've agreed to that. The next step following approval of this resolution would be to put this property out to bid. Any sale would be subject to city council approval where use of the property could be discussed, or you could reject it as well. At the November 19 Finance Committee, there were also questions about the Belvoir Ranch access from, or to or from this property. Today, I provided a memo and maps that were prepared by the city surveyor in response to those questions. We do recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions of Ms. Nemeczek?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Case.
Just briefly, and thank you, Ms. Nemeczek, for providing this information and the maps and so forth. I don't want to get too far off topic here, but we really, we have three public access points to the Belvoir, and that's something we need to be cognizant of in the future. And as related to this, though, in that three-mile stretch between the land we're potentially surplusing here and the Belvoir, do we have any easement in there at all?
We do not.
So it's 100% privately owned?
That's correct. Mayor, through you.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then just to clarify, there were some questions brought up in terms of why does it, what, what contractually obligates us to spend these dollars on parks? Just clarify that piece for us, that'd be great.
Vicky Nemeczek, Public Works, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Case. There was a legal review done of the development agreement and the sale and purchase agreement, apparently, and perhaps Mr. Downey can better articulate this, but the original purchase was made with Community Recreation Advance, which was then Parks money. They bought the property, and then the money, well, maybe I can't articulate it. Ron, would you, if you were willing to make me look smart?
Mayor, through you. I believe, after review, the way this came to be is the developers of Swan Ranch paid the development fees, which is the Fund 013, which is to be used to develop and increase the park structure, infrastructure within the city limits. So those fees were deposited within the Fund 013, and then the agreement became later that we would buy this property back with the use of those fees. So the fees were deposited into the Fund 013, and then we used the monies from the Fund 013 to purchase this property. So at that point in time, if we sell this property, those, any proceeds need to go back to that Fund 013, which would be used to increase the Parks infrastructure within the city.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner.
Follow-up, through you, to the Treasurer. So there in Fund 13, we purchased this from the Swan Ranch group?
The developers, yes.
Developers. And so then when we purchased the land, we agreed to some sort of perpetual covenant or something that we would, if we ever sold the land, that it would go back into Fund 13?
Yeah, the proceeds would go back to that Fund 013, which is the development fees for the parks.
So, Madam Mayor, through you, that is, like, where is that evidenced? Is that in the records office of the county clerk? Is it in a contract?
It would be in the contract.
Madam Mayor, through, can we just get a copy of that contract?
I'll see what I can do, yes.
Thanks.
Mayor, through you, I can, I have copies of the contracts. They were a part of the package that went to the city attorney's office, and Alessandra McCoy-Fuckelman did review them. I will be happy to scan those and get those to all the council members.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leiborn.
Ms. Nemeczek, is there anyone here from Dino Nobel?
Not, Mayor, through you, not that I'm aware of. This, this would not be a sale directly to Dino Nobel. This would be a bid process. They, they could bid on it, but so could anyone else.
I understand that. Nevertheless, their name has been associated with this from the very beginning, and repeatedly so in committee. So should I call Dino Nobel and ask them what their intent of this green space is? Is there some legal process here? Is there some, I assume there's some good reason that they're considering purchasing this or bidding on this if we choose to surplus it?
Mr. Leiborn, and I'll answer that, and I will probably ask the city attorney to follow up in that I was in communication even today with a representative of Dino Nobel, and they are making it clear that until this is actually, if this goes through and it's surplus, they are happy to participate in the RFQ and answer any questions along the process. But I think that if we start asking for information before we surplus from an entity when essentially we could get into, it's unlikely, but it sets a precedence for if there's a competitive bidding situation where one entity has provided possibly even, you know, some kind of trade information or what they plan to, you know, speculative developments, that somebody might have an advantage over another. So until this is surplus, I don't believe that we should really ask anything of, not only Dino Nobel, but anybody else that might be interested.
Well, Madam Mayor, obviously I understand that there is a good reason that, that discussion doesn't have to take place, that we're really talking about surplusing it, but I wish Dino Nobel wouldn't have come up in committee, and I wish that we would have perhaps been more circumspect to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leiborn, the reason the actual name was entered is that they're an actual neighbor. They own the property next door. And so had it have been Joe Smith, who's our next-door neighbor, I think we probably would have said Joe Smith, our next-door neighbor, wants the land. It just wasn't, it wasn't as random as, as what it might appear to be. Okay, any further, further comments?
There are just two questions. You haven't had public comment yet.
Okay, public comments? Public comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to adopt, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by council.
Madam Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I have, I'm a little hesitant to let this piece of property go. We, years ago, when we acquired it, we had a purpose for it, and we had a use for it, and that was to at least start providing some kind of public pedestrian bicycle access to the Belvoir Ranch. And there really, I don't think, even though there's other access points, I don't think any of those are really too amenable to hiking or biking to get there. So I think that, you know, I think 10 years ago or whenever we acquired this, it was a desirable piece of property for that reason, and it gets us closer than any other alternative, even though we're still three miles away. So I have a hard time supporting getting rid of it, because I do think it still could serve as a good purpose in the future, especially if we ever do, you know, if any of you have looked at the master plan for the Belvoir, it could be, you know, quite an asset to the community. And obviously, that's never gone anywhere because of the lack of, lack of funding for it. But if we ever intend to develop the Belvoir according to the master plan, then I think we need to have at least access to this piece of property. So I know that Mrs. Nemeczek said that, you know, once we declared surplus and opened the bids, then we can ask what their intent is. But it seems, that almost seems like, you know, ask, you know, closing the barn door after the horse is gone. If we're going, if we still desire to have a, let me, first of all, I think, you know, obviously we know that Dino Nobel has expressed an interest in, and that's where this came about. If anybody else bids on it, it's not buildable property, so probably anybody buying it is going to want it for carbon offsets or something along those lines. So it's doubtful to me that they would really have a use for it, other than just to, as I said, be an offset for some of their other activities. So it seems to me that it would be reasonable for us to ask for some kind of an easement across it just so we could get to our property. But wouldn't it make sense to at least let people know, if we're interested in that, to let them know to let them know as part of the surplus declaration that we would still like to have some kind of access or easement across there, because it might make a difference in what they bid, and it may skew things after the fact. So that's a whole long-winded question.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook's not here, so I thought I would ask the long questions.
Mr. President, I think that we could certainly write that into, you know, the document, should you decide to put this out there. And then again, you certainly have the option to reject all offers.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just, and I did have, is Logan still here?
No.
No? Okay.
He hit the door running.
I had some, I had some questions with him this morning about when the appropriate time would be to request that easement. Would it be now, and/or would it be at the point of sale? And he was hesitant to answer without doing some research. It would, his initial reaction was that it would need to be a very specific piece of the property, that it would be that easement, so it's not as easy to just amend and say, "We need a 20-foot easement." Probably not something that we can do tonight. So I would probably move to postpone this for two weeks so that we can clarify that and have those answers, because the last thing we want to do, as my colleague from Work Two indicated, is have only three access points with no future opportunity to develop that. And I would think that if Dyno Nobel was the incumbent to win the bid, and they own a good chunk of that land between there and whatever that access point would be, perhaps they're, you know, amenable to have those discussions, certainly to be in the future. But I think, I would move to postpone based for those purposes. Thanks.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to postpone. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes with Mr. Johnson, or Mr. White.
White.
The other one. Mr. White doesn't know.
I don't quite know how to take that.
Next item is number 21A on page four. CFD Park and Ride Planned Unit Development Preliminary Plan for a portion of the southeast quarter, Section 11, and the northeast quarter, Section 14, Township 13 North, Range 67 West of the 6th PM Laramie County, Wyoming, located east of and adjacent to I-25, north of College Drive.
Thank you. Is there discussion by the public on this item? Discussion by the public. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Weble.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to acknowledge the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve with Planning Commission Recommendations Number One, Number Two, and Number Three, and by adding a fourth recommendation, which reads as follows. The applicant, city staff, and county staff work together to find a solution to mitigate any negative impacts to adjacent property owners from this proposed development. An ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Weble, seconded by Mr. Shaner. Discussion by council.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
In regards to Amendment Number Four on negative impacts, is that pre or post the lot being built? Because if you speculate, because I speculated in front of Planning Commission that YDOT actually created a ribbon or diamond, whatever it's called for that bridge, because of traffic concerns in that area. I told them at Planning Commission that half of the time, when I try to take a right-hand turn on Southwest to go south, I end up in Arby's parking lot. Then when they brought up the use of one stoplight, I was like, okay, well, their stoplight's going to be at Southwest Drive and College, but everybody that stops to get refreshments or go to the bathroom, whatever, after the night show, that pulls out of Loves or out of Sinclair, they're not going to have a stoplight there, and so it's going to create that. Was the plan to literally block off the eastbound side of it and have everybody go west so they could get on the interstate? And then when it was, I asked, you know, if there was any talks with the train schedules with Union Pacific, it seemed it was a lot easier to deal with 15 to 20 property owners in the city and city council, county commission, and whoever was involved there than it was to deal with Union Pacific. Any local that actually uses this parking lot is going to try to go north, and if they get stuck at the train, then they're going to be coming back south, and it's just going to bottleneck. And so this entire intersection is just a mess to begin with, and I know the only thing that I give any hope to this is it's really only 10 days. But for the residents of those 10 days, you know, they're going to be dealing with regular pollution, light pollution, noise pollution, people that are just wandering around, you know, that, they've already told me multiple times that they have a transient problem already on Southwest Drive, and even when we went and protested the animal shelter, there were people like, you know, milling about that, you know, looked like they were intoxicated already walking on the road, so, and then, you know, basically, a lot of these people, even though the parking ride is designed to create sobriety, we can guarantee that not everyone that's going to leave that parking lot is going to be sober. And because of the way that the county pockets work out there, the CPD from Loves and all the truck stops out there is, you know, they're going to be negotiations with the police department again, because this is going to have to be a monitored intersection. A temporary stoplight's not going to do this. What's the conversation going to be like with the county part of it, where the sheriffs are trying to block out the north side? I mean, there's just so many variables on this intersection that just, when it talks about negative impact on Ford, there's what I see as the negative impact. And so I guess I would prefer, especially, you know, looking at hindsight, like I brought up at the last meeting, in regards to the Highway 30 things, that, you know, when we always look at these things hindsight, it always looks like we're making these bad decisions. And here's what I can see as a very bad decision right now, even if it is for just 10 days out of the year.
Okay. Any other comments by council?
Yeah, madam.
Dr. Rennie.
Yeah. I realize this isn't ideal, but they're going to lose the overflow parking that they have, and this piece of property was made available to Frontier Days, and they're taking advantage of that. So I'm not sure what else they are, you know, supposed to do unless we want to go out and search for another piece of property for them. Yes, it's going to be an inconvenience. Frontier Days is an inconvenience for the people that live in the avenues. So, I mean, it's just, and it's an inconvenience for people that work downtown on, you know, Tuesday, Thursday mornings. In some respects, Frontier Days is an inconvenience, but it's one that we've all dealt with and have determined it's worth the inconvenience. So, you know, I, yeah, I don't think this is the ideal place to have it. If I could have picked a spot on a map and had that ability, that's not where I would have put it, but there are not a lot of land options for Frontier Days out there, so I don't know what else they're supposed to do.
May I follow it, please?
Mr. Johnson.
I guess when you just, you know, when you bring up the avenues, when Frontier Days moved from Pioneer Park over to its current location, the avenues, you know, Frontier Days has been in that facility, you know, since, I believe it's the 1910s is when they finally moved over from Pioneer Park over to there. So anybody that literally moves into the avenues knows that they're going to be dealing with Frontier Days. Anybody that is in the downtown knows that they're going to be dealing with Frontier Days during either a pancake breakfast, or a parade, or any other festivities that go down there. The people of Southwest Drive, you know, already have their homes, and granted, in 50 years, if the parking ride is still there, you know, their descendants can, I can come back with the same argument and say, "Yeah, you moved into this area, but Frontier Days already existed here." So I'm basically going to be the voice of the people now that says, "I think this is a bad idea." Granted, I understand that the Samuelsons donated the piece of land along that. There wasn't a lot of accessible land to the interstate to accommodate them. I completely understand that, but as far as this road already being so thin as it is, it's barely lined, it has no shoulders, I mean, this road needs a lot of infrastructure done to it first before you even plan on putting more traffic there, even if it is for just the 10 days.
Other comments by council? Other comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes with Mr. Luna and Mr. Johnson, as no votes.
Next item is number 25B on page six. Appointment of Elisa Maggio to the Cheyenne Downtown Development Authority Board.
Thank you. Any discussion by the public on the appointment? You've already earned your stripes for sitting through all of this for this.
Hi, Elaine West, President of the Downtown Development Authority Board. I'd like to introduce you to Elisa Maggio, and we are excited to ask for your approval of her appointment. Elisa lives in downtown Cheyenne for over, in our district, for over five years, and also works in the district. We also believe that she will bring a new attitude of different generation than some of us that are serving. Hate to mention that, but it's the truth. And also, her experience with downtown living in Cheyenne will give us some insights that the board doesn't have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson.
So is she the replacement for Dave Odie? Is, we're trying to figure?
She is the replacement for David Tuvenner.
Oh, okay. So, and then I guess, so, working in the district, where did she work at?
I work at Mead Lumber.
Okay. Okay, so that, yeah, because I was told Capital Lumber, and I knew that wasn't in the district. So, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you much, very much for your willingness to volunteer and serve our community. As this is a mayoral appointment, I cannot vote, so if I could get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by, gosh, sorry.
I don't know how to take that.
I'm going to miss you, Councilman Johnson.
No, you won't.
Moved by Mr. Weble, seconded by Mr. Shaner. Any further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Other business.
Is there any other business to come before council?
Madam Mayor, City Council, as you know, the Cheyenne firefighters are doing an awful lot for their community coming up in the holiday season, and one of the things we started last year was the bike drive for the children of our community. I believe it's December 19th. I'm, we're almost having it nailed down, but I'm inviting every one of you that night to come there as we deliver these bikes to the children of our community. I will send you an official notice of that, and we'd like you to be there that night to see what your firefighters do, as well as the citizens that are receiving those bikes. So just to give you a heads up for your calendars for later in December.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments by public? Mr. Dirksen.
Is he going to go over there?
Over there would be best, please. That way the folks on watching us don't have to, it's a better view than the back of somebody's head.
Evening, Mayor. Ms. Nemeczek, Ms. Hackel, council members. My name's Jeff Dirksen. I live in Pinto Lane, and also representing the Pinto Lane neighborhood. I think it was a couple of months ago, I had a discussion with Dr. Rennie after the meeting that day, and he told me that what I've been asking for, for Pinto Lane, is something you can't do. And I thought about that, and kind of took me by surprise, a little bit by surprise on one hand, because it's the first feedback I've really gotten from the city. So as a result of that, I contacted Mr. Randy Griesbach, who's a district traffic engineer at YDOT, and had a discussion with him. Three years ago, I also talked with Mr. Griesbach, and at the time, he told me that he didn't see any problems with setting the speed limit on Pinto Lane at 25 miles per hour. At the time, I left it at that. I did not go into any details about how YDOT writes the rules and how those rules are interpreted to determine that. This time, when I talked with him, I specifically asked him about the YDOT rules, and I'd like to share with you that discussion that I had with him. I have some, it's not an amendment, it's a visual aid.
It should be, and not further than plus one or two.
Thank you.
So the first two or three pages are basically, essentially background. The first page is the YDOT rule or procedure for locally establishing speed limits. The first section there essentially lays out the authority and direction that YDOT's given by Wyoming Statute 315303 and 304303, being establishing maximum speed limits, and 304 establishing minimum speed limits. And then they refer to Appendix One, which I've identified some excerpts down below. The first paragraph 1.1, I basically restates the Wyoming statute as to what the statutory speed limits that are supposed to be followed when speed limits are not otherwise posted. Second page, this is the rule that's been in question, because Dr. Rennie, who also talked to YDOT, got a different interpretation than what I was led to believe when I talked to Mr. Griesbach three years ago. And this is specifically what I asked him about. The first, so paragraph five talks about the factors that can be or should be taken into consideration when establishing a speed limit that's lower than the 85th percentile speed. Then the next paragraph six states, "These other factors may be used to justify a speed limit somewhat lower than the 85th percentile speed, but in no circumstance should the speed limit be posted below the 50th percentile speed or lower limit of a 10 mile per hour pace." Now, Mr. Griesbach did say that there's two choices there, 50th percentile or the lower limit of the 10 mile per hour pace, in which case you would choose the larger of the two numbers. Now, the issue in question here is, when you're using the 50th percentile speed, if the 50th percentile speed's 26 or 27, or 31 or 32, do you take it to the closest 5 mile per hour increment, or do you round up? Because 25 would be below 26 or 27, or 30 would be below 31 or 32. When I asked Mr. Griesbach that question, he said he could not definitively tell me that what YDOT's interpretation of this rule is, as he did not write it. But when we discussed it, he said, "That's the way he would read it, too." But once again, he said he could not give me a definitive interpretation. The next page is an excerpt from Wyoming Statute, which gives the, gives local authorities the ability to establish speed limits within their jurisdiction, which may be greater or less than the maximum speed permitted by statute. And it finishes with, "The rules promulgated by the department shall adopt standards consistent with national practices." Next page is the title page of a Federal Highway Administration publication, methods and practice of setting speed limits. The next couple of pages are for essentially background. The contributors to this document, which were sponsored by the Federal Highway Administration, but actually written by contributors from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and it lists all the contributors to this document. Essentially, a number of people, professional engineers from different various parts of The technical report documentation page just identifies who the sponsoring agency was, who performed it, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. From here on, I took excerpts from the document. The document's about 120 pages long. But the ones that seem pertinent, this page discussed, and I point to the highlighted part near the top, which says, "It's important to note that setting speed limits lower than the 85th percentile does not encourage compliance with the posted speed limit." And I've read that in a number of situations. It says, "You can lower the speed limit by 5 miles per hour, but not everybody's going to reduce their speed by 5 miles per hour. You'll get some reduction, but not maybe as much as you would have expected." It further goes to explain, under the circumstances, the factors that can be used to determine a speed less than the 85th percentile. And you can read those as well as I can when it comes to roadway width, things that affect site distance, pedestrian and bicyclist activity. At the very bottom of the page, it says, "The use of the 85th percentile speed as a primary criterion for selecting a suitable speed limit is founded under the following concepts, which are identified at the top of the next page." Which is why the 85th percentile- The technical report documentation page just identifies who the sponsoring agency was, who performed it, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. From here on, I took excerpts from the document. The documents are about 120 pages long. But the ones that seem pertinent, this page discussed, and I point to the highlighted part near the top, which says, "It's important to note that setting speed limits lower than the 85th percentile does not encourage compliance with the posted speed limit." And I've read that in a number of cases, it says you can lower the speed limit by 5 miles per hour, but not everybody's gonna reduce their speed by 5 miles per hour. You'll get some reduction, but not maybe as much as you would have expected. It further goes to explain, under the circumstances, the factors that can be used to determine a speed less than the 85th percentile. And you can read those as well as I can, when it comes to roadway width, things that affect site distance, pedestrian and bicyclist activity. At the very bottom of the page, it says, "The use of 85th percentile speed as a primary criterion for selecting a suitable speed limit is founded under the following concepts, which are identified at the top of the next page." Which is why the 85th percentile speed is commonly used for establishing speed limits. The next page, about halfway down, talks about an expert system, it's called US Limits 2, which is second generation of the US Limits, which is a software decision-making algorithm that's, that's intended to be used as a tool for assisting localities in establishing speed limits. It was originally sponsored or performed for the Federal Highway Administration of the first generation, and the second generation is what's talked about in this particular publication.
Madam Mayor, if I could.
Mr. Shaner.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Dirksen, but maybe I could focus in perhaps what you're getting at. I don't think anybody up here is disputing what's in state statute, or state rule, or federal rule, and I think you've described them well. What is the crux of your argument? Have, have we not conducted a speed study consistent with Appendix 1 on this road area yet?
Next page, maybe that'll answer your question. We, we have.
Okay, and, Madam Mayor, through you, so, if you could tell us when we've done those studies, how many times we've done those studies, and then what the results of those studies were, I think that that would help. We don't need to recite all the applicable laws.
Okay, to answer your question, as I recall, there were, I think, three separate studies done. The last one I remember was October of 2016, roughly that time Mayor Kason asked for a speed study done. It was conducted on one day, I think it was October 25th of 2016. Prior to that, there was one done probably in the 2015 timeframe, early 2015, I think after the snow was finished for the year, I want to say March. And I think there was one done earlier than that, sometime in 2014, before we actually got into the NTMP process back in 2014. Now, what I'm trying to point out here is why I think there's a discrepancy on interpretation of this particular rule in using the 50th percentile. Each of those speed studies, as I recall, identified a 50th percentile speed of 26 to 27 miles per hour, 85th percentile speed being 30 or 31, to the best of my recollection. Now, the next page, which is page 19, talks about, and under Approach 2, the different factors that can be used or should be considered in determining a speed limit less than, less than the 85th percentile. And in using the 50th percentile speed, when it says, it's, the, under the second dot bullet down there, it said if AADT is higher than 180,000. Recommended speed limit is a 5 mile per hour, 5 mile per hour multiple closest to the 50th percentile speed. Next page, top, it talks about for roadside hazard ratings of 6 or 7, the speed limit is the 5 mile per hour multiple closest to the 50th percentile speed. Further down, where it says if at least one of the following is true, the speed limit is the 5 mile per hour multiple closest to the 50th percentile speed.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Shaner?
Follow up, Mr. Dirksen, on page 19, you were, you were under Approach 2 Bullet 2, is that correct?
Correct.
Is the AADT higher than 180,000 on this portion of the road?
No, but that's not part of my point. My, my point is not that the traffic count on Pinto Lane is 180,000 per day, it's the idea that when using the 50th percentile speed, it's taken to the nearest 5 mile per hour increment.
If the AADT is higher than 180,000?
Or, or whenever you use the 50th percentile speed.
Can you?
What I'm, what I'm trying to point out here is that it appears to, from reading this Federal Highway Administration document written by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, that if they choose to use the 50th percentile speed to establish a speed limit, that number is taken to the nearest 5 mile per hour multiple.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Dirksen, I think I understand what you're saying, but can you point me to a different justification for that, other than the second bullet of Approach 2?
Well, the, the next two, the top of the next page, where it says for roadside hazard ratings of 6 or 7, they once again use a 50th percentile speed and take it to the nearest 5 mile per hour increment.
Mr. Dirksen, what's the roadside hazard rating of Pinto?
Roadside hazard rating is, is something that's determined by this decision algorithm.
Right, correct. So what has Pinto Lane been determined?
Yeah, what, what is the rating?
Okay, and then the, the next one down, where it says if at least one of the following is true, the speed limit is a 5 mile per, once again, closest to the 50th percentile. And one of those is driveways per mile greater than 60. Which brings me to the next page, which is a US Limits 2 Speed Zoning Report. And I took Pinto Lane as an example, and put in the parameters that it calls for, and the recommended speed that it came up with for Pinto Lane, using the parameters which you can see there, is 25 miles per hour. So, the whole up-
Can I have a follow-up on that?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson.
So, Jeff, when we started all this, before the, we found out that the, we were in compliance with state statute on the 30 mile, was Pinto 25 in 2014, or was it 30 in 2014? Did we actually increase the speed limit when we did the entire scope around the city? Because I can't remember, I went out and took pictures of it in 2015, when you first came, when I first met you, to see what it was. So, in 2014, 2015, what was the speed limit on Pinto Lane at that time?
That, it depends on who you talked to. At the time, Cheyenne had an ordinance, I believe it was, which established a blanket speed limit of 25 miles per hour for local streets.
Right.
Now, the definition of local street comes from the, I forget the, the official term, but the roadway classification map that Cheyenne keeps, that identifies local streets, collectors, arterials, interstate highways.
Yeah, because I think in 2014, 2015, before we made the ordinance change to 30 miles an hour, Pinto was actually 25 miles an hour.
Right, but Pinto was also classified as a collector at that time. But the, the way the ordinance read, it's, so if you talk to the MPO, they would argue that the speed limit's always been 30 miles per hour. And I think at the time Chief Kozak really didn't know whether to treat it as 25 or 30, because it wasn't posted. Local streets were 25, technically Pinto Lane was not a local street, but then, does that, does anybody, Boulderist and Cheyenne really know what is a local street and what's not? You know, local to me is, you know, seems to imply residential. But technically, Pinto Lane was, at that time, was not a local street.
Ms. Nemeczek.
Mayor, through you to Mr. Dirksen, just as a clarification, the signs that you saw as you came into the city during the timeframe that it was post, that it was 25, said that the speed limit in the city of Cheyenne is 25 unless otherwise posted. As far as I know, Pinto Lane was never posted anything other than that, if I'm correct.
I'm gonna differ with you, Ms. Nemeczek. I think, well, those, those signs as you come into the city say, the speed limit's 30 unless posted otherwise.
No, I do.
No, it was 25. The sign said the speed limit was 25, unless otherwise posted. I ordered those signs myself.
Okay, so the, the sign that went up on Parsley, just north of College, which happened in, I think, November, the fall of 2015, which wasn't there before, has always said 30. And that was only, that's the sign that I, I can recall, so, and that's about the time that Pinto Lane was actually posted at 30 miles per hour, and the actual sign at both ends of the street. So, the, I, I think the speed limit was 25 back in 2014, but then when the ordinance changed and those signs went up, and then the signs went up on Pinto Lane, actually saying 30 miles per hour.
Mr. Shaner.
Madam Mayor, through you, Mr. Dirksen. So, I think one of the problems with this narrative is that we never get to specifics. We always leave here with generalities, and so, I don't think anybody up here would try to dispute a 25 mile an hour speed limit if that's what the formula said. We're just being told by our staff that the formula doesn't get there. So, can I ask you if it's okay to give direction to staff to do the following, to take 1.5 subsection 6 out of the rules you provided us, so on page 2, which says determination of appropriate speed limit. These other factors may be used to justify a speed limit somewhat lower than the 85th percentile speed, but in no circumstance should the speed limit be posted below the 50th percentile speed. So I think that that's perhaps what staff is looking at when they say the 50th percentile is 26 or 27, under 1.56, we can't go below that. Versus what you've identified in federal guidance, which is relevant to these rules, although I don't know if everything in here's been adopted by this YDOT commission that's charged with, the, in this chapter 30, I'm reading the chapter 30 rules right now, the Transportation Commission of Wyoming. I don't know if they've adopted all of these, but I think it's worthwhile for our staff to look into what, basically what is more, what trumps the other. The section I just read about not being able to low, go lower than the 50th percentile, versus what you've identified in this federal packet, and I'll give staff the page numbers here, so, it would be page 20 in the packet you gave us. Near the top, it says, "If at least one of the following is true, the speed limit is the 5 mile per hour multiple closest to the 50th percentile speed." So with the speed study where there was a 26 or 27, 50th percentile, the closest multiple would be 25. And then if, if at least one of the following is true, driveways per mile greater than 60. You've identified through this report that .25 miles on this stretch of Pinto Lane has 28 driveways, if we multiply that by four, we're greater than 60. So, your argument is that one of those four criteria in the federal rules has been met by your data, and therefore you believe that the 5 miles per hour multiple closest to the 50th percentile is appropriate. Can we ask our staff to give us a public analysis of which, basically which controls that federal guideline that you've identified, or that 1.5 section 6 that says you can't go lower than the 50th percentile? Can we, can we focus in on that issue and get a, get a report from staff on it, or is there another issue we need to have addressed too?
Well, let me shoot myself in the foot. US Limits, if, if you read the entire document, is intended to be not directive, or not a federal standard, but it's intended to be an aid to help local traffic, you know, traffic people establish speed limits, given the various factors. Because one of the things they mentioned in the, in the document, in the report, is there's very little agreement on what kind of factors and what kind of quantitative numbers you put to those factors in determining speed limits. And that's what they attempted to do with this US Limits program. But it's not directive in any way, it's just intended as an aid. My point in identifying how they use the 50th percentile is that it's derived by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, a national professional organization sponsored by the Federal Highway Administration. To me, that, and then you basically would need to subscribe to the idea that this document reflects nationally accepted practices. Goes back to Wyoming statute, which basically says that YDOT's rules will follow national accepted practices. Well, if the nationally accepted practice is that you take the 50th percentile and take it to the nearest 5 mile per hour increment, then 26 or 27 goes at 25, it doesn't go to 30. And that's where I think Dr. Rennie got a different interpretation than what I'm telling you, I, I see here, by what I've shown you.
Madam Mayor, I, I understand it now, I get what you're saying. I think the one thing you need to consider is that in chapter 30 of the Department of Transportation Rules, which are law, it says, "To establish minimum and maximum speed limits for paved roads, that local authorities, us, shall comply with the national standards for such roads," which you're purporting, "as detailed in procedures for establishing local authorities' set speed limits on Wyoming paved roads, as adopted." So, it's not just whatever the foots, the feds put out, it's as adopted by the Transportation Commission of Wyoming, and provided in these rules in Appendix 1. And the problem we run into is that these rules, 1.56 explicitly says you cannot go below the 50th percentile. So that is an explicit sort of standard set that could very well come into contradiction with some of these factors you've set out in the federal guidance that you've provided.
Well, and if, if the nationally accepted practice, when you use 50th percentile, is to take it to the nearest 5 miles per hour, which is what I tried to point out here, then either the YDOT rule, or the interpretation you've been given of the YDOT rule, could be contrary to Wyoming statute as written.
Madam Mayor.
And that's, and that's the point I'm trying to make.
I, I think that that's fair, but we don't have the ability to change state statute or Department of Transportation rules. So, you know, I think you should definitely, it's a valid concern to bring forward to the, the Transportation Commission of Wyoming, and just explain to them that you've studied these in depth, and you've identified an apparent inconsistency between what's in their rules and what could potentially be a best practice, as identified by the feds, which seems to be their overarching goal, is to adopt what the national standards are, yet they've said, "No, we aren't gonna do that in every case." So, I mean, I think you've identified an issue, a clear issue, that that Transportation Commission needs to address, and possibly YDOT may wanna look at redoing their rules and not being so hard line on that 50th percentile section they have. But that's not something that we can change.
No, and I'm not suggesting you do, but I'm just identifying, and, and Dr. Rennie tried to get an answer from somebody in YDOT, I tried to get an answer from Mr. Randy Griesbach at YDOT, and we got two different answers, and the last answer I got was, "He really can't say for sure." Anyway, but that's, that's my point, my essentially answer to Dr. Rennie about why I'm asking for something you can't do, when I think you have the ability to do it, when it comes to speed limits. Now, all that aside, there were two parts to the petition that I presented two years ago. The second one is to put speed tables on Pinto Lane to slow the people who drive much too fast down the street. To my knowledge, there's nothing, there's nothing that prohibits you from putting speed tables on Pinto Lane. So I don't think I'm asking for something that you can't do. Nevertheless, something for you to think about. That's all I have for this evening, but I'll have more information on Pinto Lane at future meetings. Thank you. Unless you have any questions, or more questions.
Questions of Mr. Dirksen.
Madam Mayor, yes, my question is to the city engineer. And now that we have a new traffic engineer, and could you explain her qualification? Now that we have a new traffic engineer, and could you explain her qualifications?
Yes, it's Ms. Anisa Gerard from Iowa City, and she has her PhD from the University of Iowa in traffic engineering. So, and she also worked for the MPO in the Iowa City area.
Well, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I hope that with this kind of expertise, which we didn't used to have, we can take a look at a number of ASHTO approved tools that we don't use here. I think we all know we're seeing more traffic, it's going too fast, and I think that we need to have some really solid professional expertise here, and particularly, speed tables, crosswalks, signage, there's just a number of, I guess you could call them tools, that other communities have and use for these purposes. And yet, we, to this point, this is a question I've been interested in for some time. Why do we have one speed table that I'm aware of in the city of Cheyenne at Out the Vista School, that seems to have been there since they built the school, I believe, and we can't seem to get that neighborhood, and I believe I'm correct, Mr. Dirksen, am I not, that your petition was signed by your neighbors, and they wanted those speed tables, is that correct?
That's correct. It was signed by ninety percent of the neighborhood.
So, when ninety percent of a neighborhood who has this problem, and whether the speed limit is twenty-five, or thirty, or thirty-five, when I was at your home, those people were flying, and they were going faster than that. I mean, they were, and that was a concern when I was previously on the council about the construction of South High and its access to the neighborhood. I mean, it's been around a long time. So, I hope that we can get an answer as to whether or not the city of Cheyenne is ready to bring speed tables to a situation where the neighborhoods ask for it, where they're demonstrated to be elsewhere, and maybe the new traffic engineer can give us some specific answers here, because I think there's a number of very serious traffic issues that we have. Our city's growing, we're growing, as was discussed earlier tonight, on some roadways that really were never built to handle that kind of a load, in the case of Southwest Drive, the situation we have on Highway Thirty. There's just a lot of concerns here, and I hope that we can look at some more contemporary practice and not look at getting that traffic across town as fast as we can, or out of that school, and over to Parsley, because there are other tools. And if we have a professional to look at that, I certainly look forward to discussing it with her. But, what I'm asking you tonight, Madam City Engineer, is, can we get an answer on the speed tables?
Through you, Mayor Orr, Councilwoman Labor, and I think we were looking at everything at this point. I mean, I think we can get answers, but there are a lot of pressing issues. I mean, I'm not saying that this isn't a pressing issue, but we're looking at a lot of issues, Whitney and Thirty, the school areas, she's been to the traffic safety meeting once, to see where the schools are concerned about speed, so, and this is, we've definitely talked about Parsley, and we've definitely talked about Pinto, and they're on our list of things to look at, for sure.
Maybe I'm not making myself clear. Is there any prohibition to speed tables in the city of Cheyenne, not necessarily on Pinto Lane, but in general? I believe that in the past, there has been basically what amounts to a prohibition of speed tables.
And I would refer to our new traffic engineer to take a look at that, and we will.
I look forward to discussing it with her. Thank you.
Right, any other further things for Mr. Dirksen? Okay, thank you very much. Any other further business to come before the council from the public? Any further business from council? Further business from council? I just want to say, nicely done, city engineer, hiring somebody with a PhD in traffic, because yes, her plate is very full, and good hire, nicely done.
I encourage everyone to come say hi to her, she's a joy to work with, so.
All right, thank you, hearing no further business, we adjourned.